I will call this meeting back to order, reconvening following our executive session. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. I am Kathy Allen. I am the Vice Chair of the Board. Mrs. Bailey is not able to be with us this evening. She has just not yet cleared Customs after going on a fantastic trip. And so she will be back with us at our next meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. With that, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Smith, for your superintendent update.
Right. Well, recognizing that we have a full house, and I'm sure everybody wants to have their time, my update is, first, we've been doing new teacher visits. So all of our new teachers, we've been going out to schools and spending time with them and finding out how their first year is going. Seeing the growth of students throughout this year is awesome, one quote. "I've never been more supported by my administrators in the system," another quote. "Every teacher in the building is willing to support and help anyone and everyone who asks for it, an experienced teacher." It's really fantastic. And what they're sharing, from where they started at the beginning of the year, unsure and a bit nervous about what comes next, they're really coming into their own. They're quite confident in their students' learning and what's going on in their classrooms. So to all of our new teachers, stick with us. May is right around the corner, followed by just one week in June, and then summer. We also had the opportunity to have the Teacher Leadership Cohort. These are experienced and veteran teachers who then take it upon themselves to do a plan and work in each one of the schools. Some of them took a look at mentoring. Some of them looked at multi-tiered systems of interventions and support. Some of them specifically looked at the mathematics program from elementary all the way up through secondary. Several ELAs, specifically, they were looking at the rollout of our new elementary series Benchmark Advantage. Again, a great group of people. They're doing all this extra work. They're helping improve instruction and support within the schools. It was really a great night, and it was really wonderful hearing about all the work that they had done throughout the year. On Tuesday night, we had, I estimate, well over 700 people show up at Great Mills High School to talk about and show their support for the county commissioners who've made a bold decision, four to one vote, to increase income tax by point two percent. And in increasing that tax by point two percent, the commissioners felt confident that they would be able to provide the school system $7 million over the amount of money they provided us last year. And the reason why we looked at them for all of our support was because the state is providing no increase whatsoever in the funding from the state. So we are completely reliant on the county commissioners for anything extra that we want to do for our staff. That means that if the staff are going to get a raise in any way, shape, or form, it would come from the commissioners' coffers and from the revenue that's generated by income and property in St. Mary's County. We had representatives from every single one of our schools, dedicated speakers from each one of the schools who had a well-practiced speech. As they delivered their remarks, we had representatives from the school flanking behind them. It was a night of a lot of really, really inspiring and hopeful stories. And at the end of it, nobody should walk away thinking that an investment in St. Mary's County Public Schools isn't the very best way to spend every dollar. So to all those who came out and spoke, to all of those who came out and supported, thank you very much. St. Mary's County faces the most challenging budget we have had next year. We have a new negotiated agreement that costs about $8.7 million to implement. That means that we are already at a deficit. Even though they are giving us $7 million, we are at a deficit. And that's one of the presentations tonight. We'll talk about the things that we are going to be cutting next year to make the budget work. We will also hit on the fact that we are cutting 70 full-time instructional and instructional support positions because grants are coming to an end. So it was a great night of hope. It's a great night of looking forward, and it's certainly a night that reminded everybody that we can't move forward without everybody being in lockstep. So thank you again. Here we are in April. We find ourselves at this Board of Ed meeting on the 26th. USMSM is hosting a Teacher Preparation Pipeline Summit, where we have representatives from St. Mary's County, Charles County, Calvert County, and all our institutes of higher ed, talking about how we can build multiple flexible ways to support people as they pursue licensure to teach in St. Mary's County. It's going to be a heck of a night. I would be remiss if I did not talk about our great partner, the county and the Park and Recs Program. They are working with us to provide sports academies throughout the entire summer, baseball and basketball and cheerleading and cross-country and field hockey and football and golf and lacrosse and soccer and softball, track and country volleyball, and wrestling. There are multiple opportunities for your children to be engaged in a summer activity. Please go on and register. There is space available. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the student member of the Board, Ms. Lillian Kibler.
Thank you kindly. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I hope we're all well. And welcome to all of our many, many visitors tonight, many familiar faces from my own school. So hello, athletes and everyone else who's joining us. So for my report tonight, well, actually, first, I do just want to touch on last night's budget hearing. That was so moving to see the entire community from all walks of life, from every corner of this county come together. That was so special. I was so moved. And it was so astonishing to see just how many people came out. But at the same time, it was so unsurprising, just to know how many people do care about that. So I mean, thank you to everyone who did show up. And we all put our noggins together. And that, you know, you really do move mountains that way. So that was beautiful. I just wanted to touch on that. But so for my report, we did have our final SLAC meeting of the year last week, and it was a great way to end off the year for SLAC, the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council. Here are some pictures. We welcomed our new student member of the Board, the one and only Ms. Hannah Heisler, who will take over next year. And we also had an amazing, amazing discussion about the budget, which is what ultimately inspired a lot of our SLAC students to join us last night at the budget hearing. And I can say that that, I mean, it was, it was an ugly conversation. We got into the nitty-gritty, and we were all able to really dive deep into what the educational system should be doing with our money. And I think we can say it was probably a really therapeutic discussion, right, Dr. Smith?
Definitely. Well, we had multiple students who were actually at Fairleigh Academy, which is going to have to shutter its doors because the budget does not afford us the funding to be able to move forward with it. So again, very hard conversations about things we cannot do next year because we don't have the funding available.
It was very eye-opening, but discussions that needed to be had. So that was a great way to end off our year. And we also discussed AI and cellphone policies for next year to try to keep up with the digital age. So we were getting student input on that so that we can best afford a policy that standardizes across all parts of the community. So that was really great. And then we wrapped up for next year, and we will see what Hannah does when she takes the reins.
Right. I can't wait.
That's all for me.
Thank you so much, Elaine. All right. And with that, so ends the report.
And I will say that Hannah's remarks last night were just spot on. She did a beautiful job. I'm not sure how Mr. Weiskopf doesn't have bags under his eyes. I know I do. And that hearing last night didn't end until 10:45. And I will say I was one of the last people out the door.
And so to those who stayed to the very end, that it was, that really was, that really was something. And Mrs. Allen, thank you. You always stay to the end.
Dedication. There you go. Or craziness, one of the two. I'm not sure which. The next item on the agenda are recognitions, and the first one will be the School Library Month Proclamation for April 2024, Ms. Weizakensky.
I have such a crowd.
Yeah.
Okay, so April is School Library Month, and the perfect opportunity to talk about the importance of our school libraries. Across the board, each school library is unique to fit the needs of their individual students, staff, and community interests. Now more than ever, we need to ensure that students have access to reading materials that incorporate viewpoints from all angles, and to also encourage and foster a love for reading. According to the American Association of School Libraries, nationwide studies show that students in schools with endorsed librarians score better on standardized achievement tests in reading compared to students in schools without endorsed librarians. The leaders of St. Mary's County Public Schools recognize their importance, which has led to the success of our strong library media programs. A few media specialists have come out tonight to support. I want to first specifically call attention to Mary Owen and Stacy Hazuda. They were both nominated at their schools, I should say Duke and Hollywood, for Educators of the Year at the elementary level. So that means, if I do the math, 10% of all of the total number of nominees in elementary are school librarians.
Yes.
And school librarians have consistently been nominated for Educator of the Year at their schools over the past few years. They make an impact far and wide in their schools as teachers and as instructional partners and leaders. So I wanted to take this time to publicly thank my media team for their hard work, for all they put into all the facets of their ever-changing role as a school librarian, to Jess Deeney from Ridge, to Michelle Lowe from Margaret Brent, who also took time after a busy day to come out and support. Like all educators in our system, they love what they do, and they are always striving to create lifelong readers. So proclamation?
Absolutely. So we would like them to come up.
Yes. You guys, all four of you guys.
Please, please.
Really put you on the spot.
You'll stay, of course, good. Over here in front, ready for our photo. Oh, no, did I leave the, do I have the proclamation? Do I have, I mean, I have this. I don't know if I have the official proclamation.
It is.
Is that it?
No, that's not.
That's for the next one? All right. Well, you also pretend as though you're holding a beautiful proclamation that says, "Whereas the school library is to ensure that all students and staff are effective users of ideas and information, and whereas the school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part of the instructional program of the school, and whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the school librarian in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies to provide literature appreciation activities and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student, and whereas school libraries provide materials which reflect the ideas and beliefs of different religions, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups, and their contributions to the American and world heritage and culture, and whereas the school library contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County does hereby proclaim April 2024 as School Librarian Month and calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of St. Mary's County to recognize and support the month of April in celebration of all school librarians." And this is the proclamation. We'll hold it like this. We won't take a picture. Please make sure you get my black guy. Thank you so much for coming up.
Oh, wait. I think you've got a few more pictures to be done.
Oh, sorry. Oh, this is, we have the press.
The next item on the agenda is the Month of the Military Child, and Maryland Purple Star School, Dr. Marr.
Thank you. So April is the month of the military child. The month of the military child is a special celebration and a proclamation that is the legacy of former Defense Secretary Casper Weinberger, and was established to underscore the important role children play in the armed forces community. Our schools recognize and celebrate the military-connected student population and their contributions. We honor the sacrifices they and their families make as those they love serve our nation. I've shared with you before that I was a military child growing up, transferring from base to base, state to state, or country, and school to school. I can tell you that the support and the relationships you build are critical. The military child is resilient and adaptable. They are strong, and they add strength to others. Tonight, we recognize the month of the military child, and we share our appreciation to all of our families who are part of our school communities. We also recognize one of our schools who has received state recognition for the additional supports they provide to their military-connected students. Captain Walter Francis Duke has been recognized as one of eight Maryland Purple Star Schools in the state by the Maryland State Department of Education. Becoming a Purple Star School is a mark of distinction. It indicates that the school is dedicated to serving military-connected families, which can boost its reputation and its community engagement. Receiving the Purple Star School designation reflects Captain Walter Francis Duke's unwavering commitment to creating a welcoming and supportive environment for military families. And before we bring up both the team from Walter Francis Duke, as well as friends from the base, we have a short video to share.
I am an American military child.
Captain Walter Duke would be so proud of his name sake. To note that the school named after him was named a Purple Star School, recognizing their commitment to military families and students, creating a welcoming and supportive environment.
One of the most amazing things that I've seen since being here at Duke is seeing our military-connected students and how resilient they are and how adaptable they can be.
I am a warrior in my own right and a member of the military family.
We actually have 145 military-affiliated students in our building, which is 25% of our student population.
I serve with my military parent who serve the people of the United States.
Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School has been recognized as a Maryland Purple Star School for the 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 school years by the Maryland State Department of Education. Becoming a Purple Star School is a mark of distinction.
It means that our school community is committed to providing a welcoming and supportive environment for our military students and their families.
I am an American military child.
I always place the mission first. I will stand beside, behind, and with my family.
We have staff programs and processes in place to address the unique challenges associated with frequent moves and deployment. One of these programs is Anchored for Life, which is a student-to-student program. Another program is our Military and Family Life Counseling Program. Both of these programs provide a soft landing and smooth takeoffs for our military aviators, as well as continuous support while they're here with us in our Duke community.
I will never accept defeat.
I will never quit.
Some of our challenges that the military population face is the transition. Every two to three years, these students move around, their families are being deployed, and when they come into our school system, we try to make sure that we give them a good transition, such as making sure they adjust to the curriculum, the new environment of the different schools that they visit, provide them with understanding of how our school operates so that they can feel welcome, both socially and emotionally.
I will never leave a fellow military brat hurting. I will stand beside them.
Anchored for Life is a student-to-student organization, and here at Duke, our Anchored for Life team leaders support our military-connected students as they're going through transitions. One way that we support our military students is with deployment kits. This deployment kit has Cuzzy the Bear inside, and as you can see, Cuzzy the Bear has patches on him. That represents the resiliency that our military students have. They go through hard times, and Cuzzy reminds them that they are never alone, they're always connected, and they can bounce back from the challenges that they face.
I'm disciplined but young.
Physically and mentally tough, but vulnerable.
Receiving the Purple Star School designation reflects Captain Walter Francis Duke's unwavering commitment to creating a welcoming and supportive environment for military families.
I'll ask for help when I need it.
I am adaptable and I am resilient.
I stand ready to say goodbye, whisper I miss you, and shout welcome home.
I am a representative of an American military family and the American way of life.
We are American military children.
So, Dr. Smith, would you please join me at the podium? I know we have a resolution. I'd also like to welcome Captain Doug Burfield and Dawn Simpson from NASPACS, as well as Principal Katie Quartercrack and Assistant Principal Zach Adams to the podium.
I would also ask that Mr. Dave Weiskopf, the county administrator, join us, as well as I have a resolution, and Mr. Weiskopf has a proclamation. So we can battle it out after that. Now, when we've, after I've read the resolution, and Mr. Weiskopf has read the proclamation, then I will leave it to any one of you or all of you to share comments. So with that, the resolution, month of the military child, April, whereas thousands of Americans have demonstrated their patriotism and commitment to freedom by serving in and for the U.S. Armed Services, and whereas there are more than 5,000 military-connected children and youth that attend St. Mary's County Public Schools, and whereas military-connected children and youth continue to make momentous contributions to family, schools, communities, the nation, our state, and St. Mary's County, and whereas these children are a source of pride and honor to us all, and it is only fitting that we take the time to let them know that they are valued and supported and recognize that military-connected children serve too. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County does hereby proclaim April as the month of the military child in the St. Mary's County Public Schools and community. All school staff and students are encouraged to recognize this month as the month of the military child with appropriate activities that honor, support, and thank military-connected families, signed in the state by the Board of Education. Lovely, lovely, lovely. Thank you. Your turn.
Very nice. Well, I would like to say two things before I start, which is, one, if I knew you were going to have so many people here, I'd have brought them cowbells. Because we heard plenty last night.
Yes, we did.
We owe you for that one.
Thank you, Jopticon.
Yes, it's very nice. And second, it's by chance that I'm here. You know, the commissioners couldn't make it. Commissioner President Guy was supposed to, but he went to see his grandson. So that's understandable. But I'm honored to do this and to read this proclamation. I was a military child. My father was stationed here. We lived aboard Pax River, and I went to Lexington Park Elementary and then transferred away. But there were many deployments, many, I was born in Indiana when he was going to ROTC there, and my sister was born in Georgia at a base there when he was in Vietnam, all sorts of fun stuff. But it does make you resilient. But, you know, it definitely made my mother tough. But I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas we celebrate with great pride the achievement of Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School in being recognized as a Maryland Purple Star School by the Maryland State Department of Education, and whereas Purple Star School designation is a testament to the unwavering dedication of Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School in serving military-connected students and their families with excellence and compassion, and whereas this mark of distinction reflects the commitment of Duke Elementary to creating a nurturing and inclusive environment that honors the sacrifices and contributions of military families, and whereas Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School stands among the elite, being one of only eight schools across Maryland honored with the prestigious Purple Star School designation. Now, therefore, we, the commissioners, they, the commissioners of St. Mary's County, do hereby extend their heartfelt congratulations to Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School for achieving the esteemed status of a Maryland Purple Star School. Thank you for your dedication and service to our community, signed by the commissioners of St. Mary's County. Thank you.
Hey, thanks to the Board of Education for having Mrs. Dawn Simpson and I here tonight. I'm Captain Doug Burfield. I'm the commanding officer of Naval Air Station Patuxent River. It's my pleasure and honor here to just recognize April as the month of the military child, along with all of you. And between the Board's actions and the commissioners, and, you know, the Purple Star School Award going to Duke Elementary with the principal and assistant principal here, it's tremendous. And from the bottom of my heart, I thank you, you know, on behalf of my four military kids at home, for supporting us as we moved here just a few years back. And it's been a blessing to us, and we felt welcomed in every sense of the word. And just, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of the other military families here. That connection, that soft landing, so they, you know, as we say, where there's people to support you when you get here, and people that understand you are going to try to help you out. That's, it's just a wonderful thing. So thanks for all your efforts toward this. And I see one Navy shirt over there, but I'm wondering, how many military kids do we have here tonight? There's probably, yeah. I don't know if you would mind standing up, military kids? You serve as well. Thanks for your sacrifice through deployments. And, you know, one or both parents that are gone, it's not easy, right? But you've, it's made you stronger people for it. And I just want to say, oh, thanks. You're great kids. Dawn, you want to say?
Always. Always have something to say. Well, again, it's my privilege and pleasure to be with you here tonight, and thank you for taking time out of your agenda to recognize the month of the military child. And I know that SMCPS recognizes them not just tonight and not just during the month of April, but all year long. I have the great privilege of being that link between our military families, the command, and the schools. I'm in and out of your schools all year long. And it's fabulous to celebrate Duke here tonight, but I know you have a number of other schools in your system that work hard to provide those soft landings and smooth takeoffs for our military children. I know you have quite a group here from Lenartown, and we'd be remiss, they have a student-to-student program, one of the first that we had in the county. They work effortlessly all year long, providing transition assistance to new children there. So you have a number of schools in your county providing that support. I want to thank Duke and their efforts for submitting that lengthy, extensive application to be a Purple Star School. Those efforts are not lost on me. I know it was extensive, not just to fill out the application, but to provide the documentation and the evidence and actually do all the things in there that get you that designation. I know you have a lot of other schools in your system that are doing very similar things. So I hope that they too will one day get the recognition that they deserve. It serves as a great beacon to our military families to know they're coming to a school. We know that. I know that because I'm in your schools all the time. But for our inbound military families coming from around the country and around the world, it just shines a beacon that they will indeed arrive at a school system that has great supports, services, programs. And I often tell them, so many already military-connected people here who have walked in their shoes, they truly, genuinely understand the service and sacrifice of being a military family. So again, I have that great privilege of working with those families, sharing that good news, providing those resources, linking our schools with resources like military family counselors and Anchored for Life and student-to-student programs. I will keep doing that, and I stand ready to assist any way I can. So thank you again tonight, and thank you, military kids, for your service, too. Hi, good evening. Mr. Adams and I are honored to be here to accept the recognition of the Purple Star School. It is our pleasure to serve our military students and their families and the incredible sacrifices that they make. We want to thank Tia Brooks. She's our Military Family Life Counselor, Monique Osborne, who is our counselor, and also our
Anchored for Life.
Our Anchored for Life and our military liaison. I want to thank Dawn Simpson. You are invaluable, too, just making all this happen. And thank you, Captain Burfield, for being here tonight. Thank you.
All right, let them take some pictures. All right. Do we all look good?
We're all good.
All right. Again, thank you very much.
More earlier than month.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I have my purple on. All right. The next item on the agenda is, we do not have a public hearing tonight, but I believe we have public comment, six, we have six members for public comment. I will read our public comment statement, and the way this works is that as Ms. Short calls your name, she will, we will ask you to come up to the podium here to speak. If you have prepared remarks, you may share them with Ms. Short following your remarks, and she will make sure that they are distributed to all of the board members. And so, the Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about that that can't be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the Superintendent, and we cannot allow, permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Additionally, we sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the Board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding an individual student or personnel issues can't be presented at public comment. We ask that you sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. So with that, Ms. Short will have a timer, and when you hear the timer go off, if you could just please wrap up to be respectful of the other people who wish to speak tonight, we'd greatly appreciate that. With that, Ms. Short?
The first one is Garrett Bader.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
How's it going, guys? My name is Garrett Boucher, and I am here speaking for the athletic trainers at Chopticon High School. I am here to express my concern for the athletic trainers in our school system. Our athletic trainers serve as the first response to after-school injuries, but they also do so much more. They instruct us on injury prevention's techniques such as hydration, proper warmups and stretching techniques, taping and bracing of athletic injuries. They provide first aid and treatment of minor injuries. Athletic trainers are the most certified when it comes to diagnosing and treating concussions. Athletic trainers also can evaluate and diagnose injuries. This allows them to communicate, care with locate, local doctors and physical therapists to save us time and money. Nothing is worse than sitting in the ER for several hours only to be told to go home and follow up with an orthopedic. Our athletic trainers have the ability to advise us and guide up on correct medical path. This is why I believe athletic trainers deserve the same benefits and security that a full-time pensioned benefited position receives. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next we have Caris, if I'm saying that right, sorry. Oliver, Caris.
Is it okay we go together?
Sure.
That's fine.
Yes. On athletic trainers.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Riley Kopsi.
I'm Caris Oliver.
And we're here to express our support for our athletic trainer. We are student athletes at Chopticon High School, and we believe that athletic trainers should receive the same fully benefited, fully benefited, full-time position that teachers receive. We know our athletic trainer would like to be here, but he is currently at school caring for our other student athletes. Athletic trainers require, are required to have a master's degree and a medical license. They must work nights and weekends with no holiday break or spring break.
To not provide them with the same benefits and stability as other employees is unfair and wrong. We have over 500 athletes at Chopticon High School, and our athletic trainer supports and connects with each and every one of them. Our trainer is part of our community, and we rely on him every day for social, emotional, and physical support. He is there for us when we need help the most. He cares about our health, our safety, and our livelihood. The emotional role he plays on our lives cannot be understated. Please reconsider and offer our athletic trainers what they deserve. Thank you.
Next we have Kim Vladiminda.
Look, I have one quick question before I get started. There is a track team that's here today that was told they were supposed to be recognized, and you guys have gone through all your recognitions already? That's a no?
They were not on our agenda. We will have to explore this and find out what's going on.
The four-by-eight-hundred Lenartown High School third place indoor
I, it's, it's, it's
Okay.
I guarantee we will recognize you. I'm so sorry, it's not, it's not on our agenda this evening. That's
I, I'm sorry for that.
Oh, no, no.
I know all four of them, and they, they came all dressed up and they got a little confused, so I decided to ask
Well, we'll definitely take a picture before you leave, and then we, and then we will officially recognize you.
They rushed from their practices
Yeah, I am
We will bring them back.
I will do everything to make that right. I apologize.
So, my name is Kim Vladikar, and I have two daughters who attend Lenartown High School. My daughters are what one call year-round athletes. They run cross-country in the fall, indoor track in the winter, and play lacrosse in the spring. The reason they are able to continue to perform all year at a high level is due to our athletic trainers. We all know athletic trainers are imperative in case of emergency. Athletes can get serious injuries, things like bone breaks, muscle tears, concussions. All of these require quick assessments and actions in order to prevent major and lifelong damage. What is less obvious is the daily support athletes need from athletic trainers, the behind-the-scenes action that if didn't occur, our athletes would not be successful. My younger daughter suffered a hip strain after the cross-country season. Because of the day-to-day effort, efforts by her athletic trainer, she continued to get stronger. Even more importantly, she could work with the trainer and still be with her team. As she improved, she could even do some team workouts. This not only helped with her athletic performance, but her mental health as well. Participating in athletics provides lifelong friends and built-in support systems. By the end of the indoor track season, my daughter was strong again and set a personal best in the 1,600. When she crossed the finish line, she threw her arms in the air and cried, and her friends surrounded her with hugs. She got there because of her athletic trainers. My older daughter has a propensity for running and loves to push herself. She has brought home two state titles to our school system and was runner-up for the cross-country states this year. Because of how hard she works, there are many aches and pains. Her athletic trainer has been able to answer all of her questions, work out any kinks, show her proper techniques, and ease her mind when she was worried something might truly be wrong. I would be taking her to the doctor every other day if it weren't for her athletic trainers. Because of the athletic trainers, she was able to keep pushing herself and set four more school records this year. She will be graduating in May and now gets to live her dream and continue her athletic career in college. She has already made Lenartown High School proud. I hope she continues to do this the next four years, and I hope everybody remembers what it takes to get there. Thank you.
Next we have Abby R. and Avery.
We have our whole lacrosse team.
Get the visual, all go up there, gather round.
All right, so, good evening. We are the Lenartown Lacrosse Team, and we're here to talk about athletic training. Athletic trainers are very beneficial, and for every athletic, for every athlete who needs help and care. We want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to share our stories and regarding our wonderful athletic trainer we have at Lenartown High School. She is one of the best person you'll ever meet. She builds this amazing bond, like mentally and physically with her parent, wait, that wasn't, sorry, but, um, bonds with her Lenartown athletes. Like, she gives us 100% of her trust. We know when to come to her, and we know that she's always going to be there for us. So I'm a three-sport athlete, and I've had the worst cramps in my life with my legs. I've had multiple ankle issues, and going to Amber just helps me so much. I'm sorry. But she's just a wonderful person, and it sucks to
To emphasize the significance of our athletic trainers, just this season, one of our athletes went down in the middle of practice, and because of Amber's quick response, she diagnosed the ACL tear, and this athlete is now able to be in surgery and on recovery. A situation again happened in a game, and because Amber was there, the athlete is now on recovery. The athletic trainers are essential to our high school programs and to keeping our students safe. Anyone else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next we have Cynthia Lisa.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. This is part of my amazing team of incredibly young women. I'm the head coach at Lenartown for lacrosse. I've been there for six years, but I've coached in the county on and off since the Navy brought us here in 2006. We are fortunate to have an incredible athletic trainer at Lenartown, at Chopticon, throughout the district. I was a collegiate athlete who only made it through with the help of athletic trainers, so I know firsthand what it is like to be an athlete and experience that. Since being at Lenartown High School, I've witnessed many injuries whose impacts were lessened by the immediate attention of an athletic trainer and the continuous follow-up care and the return-to-play protocol, both of which you've heard about tonight. The two most impactful injuries I've witnessed have been season-ending concussions and ACL tears. You've heard about that. The ACL tear epidemic is so pivotal now that the Aspen Institute and the Hospital for Special Surgery have created a task force on it. It's getting just as much attention as concussions. They need to be immediately attended to by an athletic trainer and not an untrained, already overtasked coach, parent, official, or teammate. As my, one of my athletes mentioned, this year we lost two on our field. Just Monday night, we were at a visitors' field, and a girl went down with leg pain non-contact injury, blank stares. They didn't have a trainer. Didn't, nobody knew what to do. Eventually, the dad came down from the stands, it squirted her off. They had a bucket of ice, didn't really know where to apply it. She had to go to the ER later that night. As you can see, the role of an athletic trainer is pretty pivotal. I'll also tell you about another story, story, excuse me, February of 2023, last year, I was sitting in the stands at the St. James watching our team, a bunch of our players play in an out-of-season league, and I'm just there as a, as a spectator. I watched one of my players awkwardly move her leg on the field. Before I could get down there to be like, hey, just sit out, an EMT had looked at her and said, you're fine, go back in. You can only imagine what happened next. Gone for the season. A senior captain who is now recovered and playing college because she was with our athletic trainer every single day at Lenartown High School. I think you see the value that we all see, and I hope that it impacts your decision on keeping the athletic trainers fully funded and getting what they deserve to remain at the school with these amazing athletes. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. Just to reiterate what the Superintendent said at sort of just before the start of the meeting, we do have an action item on athletic trainers. We have one brief thing between that and, and where we are right now, and so I would invite all of you to, to, to stay, if you have the time, so that you can hear what goes on. And with that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move, I move the Board of Education approve their consent agenda consistent of approval of the minutes of April 10, 2024, personnel, teachers, and no personnel administrative and supervisory.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it. Action items, contract modification, ITB SMCPS 2022, ATH CAT Certified Athletic Trainers, and that is for, who is presenting?
Ms. McCourt.
Ms. McCourt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Back in the spring of 2022, the school district put on ITB an invitation to bid for contracted services for the certified athletic trainers. The training services are provided to the student athletes at each of our three high schools, Great Mills, Chopticon, and Lenartown. At that time, in August of 2022, the contract was awarded to Perflex for one-year term with an option to renew for four additional years through August of 2027. The estimated annual usage at that time, per school, was 1,000 to 1,200 hours per school year for a total of 3,000 to 3,600 hours, I'm sorry, per school, and then 3,000 to 3,600 hours for the entire school district, all three schools, at a rate of $39 per hour for an estimated yearly total cost who are alleged up to $140,000 for the first year of the contract. We are requesting an increase to the estimated annual usage to 5,720 hours to allow for services over the course of 11 months of the school year and 40 hours per week. Additionally, the initial contract allowed for Consumer Price Index adjustments, which were not utilized by Perflex, of which we are requesting now on their behalf, from an amount of $39 to an increase to $44.45 per hour. The CPI increases in FY '23 was 3.11%, and FY '24, 6.7%, and in FY '25, 3.6%, which equated to the increase from $39 to $44.45. So the action requested at this time is to, one, increase the number of hours to allow for 11-month services to our students for 5,720 hours for the year across all three schools, and increase the rate of pay from $39 to $44.45. The, I apologize? The total estimated cost is $254,254. As we're working on balancing our budget, of which we'll present later this evening, we did identify cost savings in two areas. As presented at your last board meeting, we updated the memorandum of understanding with the College of Southern Maryland for dual enrollment, specifically for the in-person classes taken at the SMCPS campus. In the current school year, that price was 75% plus 25% of all the fees, and that was reduced to 50% for each of the classes, and that results in a anticipated budget decrease of $100,000. We also reconciled our PSAT, SAT, and AP based on participation via articulated intent. Previously, we allowed for all students to attend, or I'm sorry, take these classes, these tests, and we did not require a participation via articulated intent. We now require that, and that reduces our budget to 115, by $115,000. So the budgeted increase associated with the increase to the $44.45 and the increase every 11 months is expected to be $67,954, reallocated within that same category. So at this time, I turn it over to the Board for the
So just a little bit of background as well. Every single year, for the last two years, there's been a request to move the athletic trainer from a contracted services to a full-time benefited employee. The cost to do that, on average, is probably going to be close to $85,000, starting salary plus full benefits, about $85,000. Following last week's, or last, the last board meeting's recognition and public comment, followed by movement across the school system to, to talk to us and to send us emails, I think we received about 50 or 60 emails, to move this into a real priority for next year's budget. I reached out and I contacted one of the owners from Proflex, and I had a very productive meeting with him last Friday, Mr. Watson was also in attendance. We talked about all of the challenges that are facing every single school system in the state of Maryland, as well as anybody who is employing a certified athletic trainer, and that the expectation to have a master's degree has in no way kept up with the overall compet- compensation that's being provided, the position. Average rates for compensation for athletic trainers are about $35 to $40 across the entire state of Maryland. We had a good meeting. At the end of the meeting, I said, well, we're in a heck of a position this year in St. Mary's County Public Schools. We do not, we asked for a $14 million increase. We then modified it down to a $9.5 million increase and ultimately find ourselves with a hopeful, anticipated $7 million in additional funding for the upcoming year. At the same time, it is the sunset of every single federally funded ESER relief position that we have had in the school system for the last three years as a result of the COVID and the pandemic. We are cutting, as a system, 70 positions. Seventy fewer people will work for St. Mary's County Public Schools next year. Furthermore, we will have to cut even further and reduce programming to make the $7 million provided work. So what can we do? Well, we met with the owner of Proflex. He gave me a number that he thought would be at least something that would attract or retain the people who are currently employed. We then went back and figured out a way, under the contract that has currently been signed and approved by the board, to modify the hourly rate and to also increase the coverage of schools to 40 hours a week, which will be more than if they were a full-time benefited position. If they were a full-time benefited position, that would be 35 hours a week, so it's more than our full-time benefited employees. And ultimately, that's really what we could do. When you are cutting teachers, it is very challenging to bring on additional positions. So we put it all together. We told the owner of Proflex that we would be bringing it before the board as a consent agenda item, and that's what we can do right now. I understand the incredible caliber of the people providing services to our students, our student athletes at the three schools. They are top-flight. We recognize them, Holly and Amber and Wes. These are people who truly want to be part of St. Mary's County Public Schools. And why? Because it's a very special place to be. And why do they want our benefits? Because our benefits are top-notch, and we work every single year, Ms. McCourt works every single year to be able to provide that service. So do the people that we are putting out of a job for next year. So the best we could do was increase contracted services because we knew we had negotiated a reduction in the, in the cost for the College of Southern Maryland. That was the best we could do right now. That provides $85,000, three times over, to bring athletic trainers to St. Mary's County Public Schools. That is more than is being offered on the other side of the bridge, and it is competitive across the entire state of Maryland based on every single piece of information that I could find. Now, in 2026, chances are, we'll be able to perhaps consider bringing on more full-time employees, but right now, this is the worst possible time. I had a further meeting last Friday with the owner of Proflex once again, Mr. Mike Watson, and Mr. Wes Patterson from Chopticon High School, so he could really talk to me about the difficult decisions he's being faced with. Everybody, right now, wants to be in a secure, full-time position within a school system with the benefits and protections of being part of that incredible organization. That's why we had multiple speakers last night and perhaps 700 people show up to talk about it. I applaud every person who comes out here, who came here today and shared their stories, and honestly, that is the only way things get done, if you come out. I wish you would have been there last night to talk to the county commissioners about how important additional funding is to St. Mary's County Public Schools. I can tell you that your words are not falling on deaf ears. We are trying to do everything we possibly can. I am saddened if anybody steps away from us to go someplace else. You do have a commitment on behalf of this Board of Education to have full-time athletic trainers at all three of our schools, and ultimately, the goal is to have them be benefited members of our St. Mary's County Public Schools staff. But as of right now, this is where we are. So I don't know if the board will approve the action that's before them, but that was where we got. Please know that I understand, we understand, the importance of that position. But you know what? Ultimately, Fairlead Academy is just as important, instructional resource teachers, counselors, all of these other people are as, are as important as, as well. And it's really hard to tell somebody that they're going to lose their job when you're bringing on somebody else full-time. So as I told the owner of Proflex, as I told Wesley Patterson, as I'll tell anybody, we would love to have them as a permanent member of St. Mary's County Public Schools. We would love to hire them as a teacher, but they have to have the credentials and desire to become a teacher to do so. We will continue our work. We hope that this is at least a short-term, stopgap, workable solution. There is enough money available to at least compete with what is being presented in other venues. If indeed Proflex isn't able to honor the agreement, isn't able to recruit, then we'll put out an invitation to bid once more, and we'll try to draw people to us. But we hear you, and we thank your participation, and with that, I turn it over to the board.
Questions or comments? Lilly?
I have no questions. Thank you.
No questions.
Dorothy?
Well, also, we want to thank Tammy. She's the guru with the funds, so that way we can move the budget around to accommodate. Started with the parents. Thank you for all of your emails, the parents that came out and talked. That was the start of reconsidering.
Right.
Looking at the budget, so that way you can be accommodated the best that we can. It's a tough decision up here, and thank you for all of your comments, especially the younger generation. You're going to be here one day, maybe some of you, so you kind of get to see it in action here, so. I'm glad we put it as an action item, so that way the students could actually see it in the process. Thank you.
As a former critical care nurse, I, of everyone, certainly understand the issues that athletes face. My son is a graduate of Leonardtown High School and was a three-season athlete for his career there, and he, he ran track under Snyder, both indoor and outdoor, and it, that's, you know, that's, that is a part of our life. In fact, my husband is still working the, the home track meets at Leonardtown High School because he ran track in both high school and in college. So in our family, we absolutely understand this. This is a conversation that's been going on. I'm sure Mr. Henderson can explain to you or share with you, this is a conversation that's been going on, not just this season, but over a number of seasons, and we have looked at every way we could possibly accommodate this. This is not a conversation that will end with, with the vote this evening. As, as long as I'm here, we will continue to have this conversation because athletic trainers, especially now that we have turf fields, I think are especially important. And the injuries that can occur, we certainly understand, and anything we can do to mitigate those and to make sure that our athletes are well-cared-for is incredibly important. So please understand that while it may seem to you that this, whatever this action is, is not enough, it's a step farther than where we are today, it's a step farther than where we were last year and the year before, but it means, even if we have to take small steps on a yearly basis, it is what, it is what we can do. I will also share with you that at the end of last night's budget hearing, Commissioner President Guy did note that the record is still open, and so if anyone would like to send an email to the county commissioners, I'm sure that they would welcome it. What I think is important for them to hear is, thank you for the money that the, that you are providing the school system through this budget process, but there are additional very important needs that, that should be addressed, and that anything that they can do to provide additional consideration would go a long way toward helping the school system make the steps that they need to make. And so what I've learned over many years is keeping it positive, but making your points goes a long way toward everyone listening and hearing and considering what might, what might be possible, and that's what we're looking for, is what might be possible. So thank you all very much for coming out this evening, for those who spoke, and for those who are simply here in support of others who spoke, please know that you have been heard.
First, I would like to thank the students for coming out to speak so eloquently about the benefits of the Certified Athletic Trainers. It puts me in the mind of when there was a time, not only our school system, but many school systems did not have a registered nurse in each school, and the teachers and the principals were expected to take care of the medical needs of students. We shouldn't expect the coach to do the job of a Certified Athletic Trainer. The Certified Athletic Trainers are essential to the health, well-being, and safety of all our students' athletes. Thank you so much for coming out, everybody who spoke, and I appreciate it, and this is what we train our students to be, advocates, and they spoke well. You did a great job, and I'm very pleased and proud of you.
And please know that our chair, Mrs. Bailey, is absolutely an advocate for, for trainers. Her daughter, who is, who is now in college, her son, who is a student at, at Chopticon, each of them were, are and were three-season athletes, so Mrs. Bailey is with us here in spirit, certainly. With that, I would ask if they're, ask for a motion?
I move that the board approve the modification of contract ITB, SMCPS, 2022, ATH, CAT, for Certified Athletic Trainers, CAT, awarded to Proflex Therapy, Proflex, to increase the estimated annual hours to 5,720 of CAT usage on an as-needed basis to cover 11 months of the school year, and to approve the allowance for an increase of the contract hourly rate of the CATs from $39 per hour to $44.45 per hour.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dorothy? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. If you would all, you're welcome to stay for the last bit of the meeting, but certainly understand if you would like to go get dinner, or homework, or any of those things, we're not offended as you decide to leave.
Homework?
Absolutely. All right. Next item on the agenda, Maryland Blueprint update. Dr. Marr, you are back up.
Sarah, do you want to join me up here? So I'm going to be joined with some of our friends here because this is a, a team effort, if ever there was one. So I know Ms. Lorick and I have been working with the various directors, chiefs, and other leaders of this system, and they're going to be coming up here to talk about their respective areas as well, but we have been on this path for a number of years. We've been to you, to you several times to update you on where we are with the blueprint. We submitted last March our first part of the blueprint, and they promised us that there would be another part that we'd get to do this year, and, and so we shared part A of that in March with you all and with the AIB and MSD, and now we have part B. So in part B, we're really looking at all five of the pillars. There, we have a 99-page limit, and we have, we're at page 98, I think, so we're, we're really close to finishing it, but we have a draft that we have, we have posted online and shared with you all as well. But for each of the five pillars, there are a number of questions and sub-questions, and so what the plan essentially does is it describes our work for each of the elements within each of the pillars. So in sum, there are 23 official questions, but subsumed under each of the questions is a number of bullets and other pieces to explain, so hence the, the 99 pages. It is posted at smcpss.org/blueprint. You'll see there last year's plan, which was approved in July, the March submission, and then you'll see the draft of this submission that is due to MSD and the Accountability and Implementation Board next week on May 1st. We have held four town halls throughout the year. You all were there. We have them posted again on that website too, so if anyone still wants to watch them. And on that same website is a feedback form and an email address that I'll, I'll cover again at the end of this presentation. But throughout the year, the, the town halls were one way to gather input, but as each of the directors and our partners will share, they, they had other opportunities besides the, the town halls to gather input. There were multiple teams with stakeholders, there were program of studies meetings, there's meetings with various committees throughout the system. Each one of those gathers input and information that helps to inform the plan and our work relative to the blueprint. So with that said, I'm going to rotate out of this chair. I'm going to invite Dr. Hall up, who's going to give some highlights of the plan for Pillar One.
So Pillar One is early childhood. I have my glasses this time. So the first part is that we are obligated to have access and increase our access to high-quality, full-day pre-K. And as I've shared with you previously, full-day pre-K four is defined by the blueprint as for children up to 300% of the federal poverty level, and for students with an IEP or an IFSP, so a child with a verified disability, or a multilingual learner up to 600% of the blueprint. It also requires a high-quality mixed delivery system, which is a combination between public schools and private childcare providers. St. Mary's County does not have any participating private providers deemed by MSD at this time. Nonetheless, we work with them, we collaborate with them, they share our professional development, they share our parent-family engagement workshops, so we have a good relationship, and when they're ready, we'll be there. Our workforce development and pipelines for high-quality pre-K includes a child development associate for a paraeducator, so that is an acceptable portion. I do have grant funding, so that if a paraeducator is interested in pursuing that, we can get them set up. We, we work with ProSolutions, which is the agency that does it. We get their book. They don't have to pay for anything. That's all done through a grant. But we also encourage our paraeducators to think about pursuing an associate's degree instead, because that opens up lots of possibilities beyond pre-K, including the possibility of going on and getting a bachelor's degree so that they can ultimately become a teacher. And so we are, I'm always talking to them about, you know, think about this, and some of our paraeducators are choosing to do that. They're choosing to go the associate's route. And then our kindergarten readiness test, recently I presented the results. So St. Mary's County well-outperformed the state. We're really proud of that. We had a 7.7 percentage increase in the aggregate, as well as every single student subgroup, student group increased as well. So that is really the status for Pillar One right now, and as Dr. Marr said, there are lots of pages, lots of questions. We answered them, but those are our requirements, and we're meeting them.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
Sure.
Very nice.
Okay, so Pillar Two.
And I am pinch-hitting with our, for our friend, Dr. Farrell, and there's a lot of overlap between obviously his team and ours on this, but there are five key questions that were in Pillar Five. in pillar five, and so, pillar two, excuse me. The first is in expanding our diversity and the high-quality teachers that we have in our workforce. So, several things that we talk about is the work that we're doing to expand recruitment efforts, particularly working with organizations such as Diversity and Ed, and our partners to expand those pathways for certification. Dr. Smith mentioned earlier, for example, the event this Friday where we're working with University System of Maryland, Southern Maryland, as well as all of our other higher education partners, and the tri-county region really, to look at how we support additional pathways for future teachers and those who are interested in becoming teachers. The negotiated agreement that you signed at the last meeting talks about, it really provides for the salary enhancements and tuition reimbursement that help our teachers and future teachers to get on this path. And of course, we've talked several times about Grow Your Own strategies, our current teacher-apprentice program, as well as other programs such as Parrot-to-Teacher Pathways and others. The second question looks at the similar question around our leaders, and so how do we work with our partners? We're very fortunate in the fact that some of our higher ed partners in the area offer master's programs, administrative and supervisory pathways, but also tailoring it to the needs of our system. And so, they're actually going to be at this meeting again on Friday, so that's another part of that conversation. Dr. Smith also shared pictures of our teacher leadership cohort, so how do we foster that leadership for existing staff, not only who are seeking to become administrator leaders, but also teacher leaders? And that teacher leadership part of it, of the blueprint, is incredibly important. At our previous meeting in March, we recognized those staff who earned National Board Certification or renewed their certification. We currently have about 83, I think, teachers who are in a cohort of other colleagues who are working towards National Board Certification, and we have professional learning teams who are supporting them along the way. And that support for those teachers who want to become National Board Certification not only will help them, but their students as well, and particularly the additional enhancements that are there for those who earn it, and those who earn it at blueprint schools particularly. The managing partnerships, I've already talked enough about that, I think, but you understand that we can't do this alone. We, like everyone else in the state, are facing this teacher shortage. One of the pieces of data that really, it strikes me is that the number of conditionally certified teachers across the state has risen by 251% in the last five years. That's a lot of teachers that we really need to support in becoming fully certified, but also those who are interested. There's a number of them who are interested in becoming teachers, and how do we support them to become so? And then finally, the educator compensations, very quickly and succinctly, how are you meeting that $60,000 minimum salary? And I think our new contract addresses that very cleanly. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bachner to talk about college and career readiness.
Thank you, Dr. Marr.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a few slides. We had some meaty questions, but that's fine, it is our work in Division of Instruction. So, the first one I'd like to attack is the college and career readiness in English and language arts, so some of the things that we're lifting in that area are, we are also required as part of the blueprint to develop and submit a comprehensive literacy plan by June 28th of this year. We will be coming before the board, just like we are tonight, to share that before we submit to the board. And we're working through the 27-page rubric that we got from MSD two weeks ago to get that done. We are also tasked to make sure that we have multi-tiered systems of support, you've heard that for years, when we're talking about social-emotional learning, and now they're talking about those for instructional, what are we going to do for students if they don't get it in the classroom for a tier-two and a tier-three? We need to have those in place, and they need to be documented, and how we're going to progress, monitor those. We also need to be, have a very clear plan in place about how we're going to support any of our students that struggle in literacy in grades four through 12. We have a really, really solid and a really great plan and some great programming for our kindergarten pre-K through second graders, because we want them all to read by third grade, right? That is our goal. But what happens if they don't? What do we need to do? Well, everything needs to be intensified at that point to make sure that they do become readers, so that has to be part of the plan that we're working on. And then we have to make sure that we're having a systematic professional development plan in place for the science of reading, that is the law. 100% of our teachers in our primary grades must be trained in the science of reading. We are well on our way, we have phenomenal teachers who are taking that on. We need to continue though, as we get new teachers, or our teachers that enter those grade levels. And we also need a participation track now and follow-up as part of the blueprint. So we're putting a program or some, a system in place to track those that attend PD and those that still need to take part in professional development. As far as mathematics, we have a comprehensive math plan that is due, it is due in June of 2025. We are required to submit a draft AIB and MSD in September of 2024, which is great, because then we can get feedback and then have the year to work on it. We already have for both the ELA plan and the math plan, a stakeholder group, it's not just a supervisor working on this, it is parents, it is teachers, it is administrators, it is students, working on this comprehensive plans. Again, we have to have an MTSS and tiered intervention system for the instruction, to make sure all students are attaining those standards in mathematics, and we have to have that professional development plan in place with accountability and tracking for participants. If they don't participate, we need to follow-up and offer other opportunities. And the other thing you're going to hear a lot about is high-quality instructional materials. And I want to thank this board again for the eight years I've been with you in this capacity, the number of textbook adoptions we have done helps us greatly here, because we are not like other counties. Other counties who have written their own curriculum and did things, do not have at this time high-quality instructional materials. We always use ed reports as our first layer to ensure that we have high quality, we have been insured by MSD as of yesterday, that will continue to be the gold standard, with some other things that we need to consider, but we are in really good shape with that high-quality instructional materials because of what this board has done and approved for us to use in our county, so thank you for that. The next thing we had to focus on is algebra readiness and success. Again, we're going to do the comprehensive math plan, algebra will be a very, very large section of that plan. We have to make sure, and we're going to work on coherence of topics, mathematics topics, from elementary, middle, to high school, to make sure everything is aligned, and we're going to adjust pacing guides as we need to do as we look at that, as well as teacher guidance and professional development. We also need to make sure our curricular resources and these support resources are, of course, high-quality and include evidence-based strategies. And we're really going to focus on fractions and divisions, because fractions and divisions are the number-one precursor of Algebra I success in all research. So that's really where we're going to start in elementary school, and make sure all those foundational skills are really solid, so when Algebra I comes, that Algebra I is very solid, because that then is the precursor of higher-level mathematics at that point. We're going to monitor targeted students related to fractions and division across elementary and secondary assessments, and we're going to include more fluency practices, experiences. So, making sure students not only can do the computation, but are fluent in that, you know, making sure that they can do those fluently. And again, the professional learning, it has to be targeted, and it has to be accounted for who's taking what and who still needs things. We need to ensure we're doing high-quality school-day tutoring. And so, at this time, we have literacy interventionist teacher assistants, we call them LEADs, that are deployed, we have 10 of them deployed to 12 schools, and they are based on data, we look at the DIBELS data, the Foundations and Haggerty data, to determine how we're going to deploy those LEADs to schools, and they absolutely work on those pull-out, research-based interventions with small groups of students at those schools. We're also working to identify students that we call on the cusp of MCAP assessments, those that are between the two and three, and maybe are one or two or three questions away from kind of getting right up to where they need to be, so that we can give those really targeted additional supports, they can get to that three or four, which of course is a college and career readiness standard, which we want students to be at. And we're also going to work in the next year to pilot a CCR support course that will target grade-level eighth-grade students to receive potentially an extra additional block of mathematics in eighth grade, to give them an even more solid start, so that when they hit that Algebra I or high-school mathematics, they have a better foundation. And last but not least, of course, we have to make sure students are demonstrating college and career readiness in high school. We already started that this year, conducting individual CCR support meetings with students that do not attain CCR. We met with over 1,000 students this spring, teacher, I didn't, it was teacher teams at all three high schools, and talked to students and gave them goal areas to strive for, what's your next step in becoming college and career readiness? We did that purposely in January, February, so that they had those conversations before meeting individually with their counselors, so that they could plan their schedules for next year, so we focused with 11th graders. We need to expand opportunities for both support and post-CCR pathways. We do that every January, when you come to you with a program of studies, so we have lots of things in place for students, both post-CCR and support pathways. And we have instituted a tiered counseling approach. We have always had a great counseling system, but we have been able to, with Blueprint and the Workforce Development Board and our Department of Labor, been able to integrate with, along with CSM, to then provide more resources or those counseling opportunities, specifically in middle schools where we started this year, with some other supports in high school. So that's all I have for pillar three.
Thank you. And Ms. Long.
Good evening.
Okay, pillar four.
So, the first thing we're going to talk about is the engagement and communication with our multilingual learner families. We've hired a bilingual family engagement liaison, she's been charged with ensuring equity and access of our multilingual parents and guardians by breaking down barriers to communication, giving parents more opportunities to participate in their child's education. One strategy that she's used for that is the online interactive newsletter, the S-MOR, that we fondly know it as, that translates in people's native language, so they're able to access the information, important information, that gives them information on state testing, rising freshman nights for Spanish speakers, and how to report absences and information such as that. Also, we continue to use the language line, and something that they recently implemented was having a poster in the main offices, so that if a parent comes in and their native language is not English, they can point to their native language on the poster, and then the, we will then put the language line in place and at no cost to the family, so that we can assist them in the main office, starting there with whatever their need may be. The second question, our supporting multilingual learners and increasing language acquisition. We've added three certified full-time ESOL teachers, and continue to have the two multilingual tutors that we have talked about before with those specialized degrees in the core subjects, and they provide that supplemental instruction in the classroom to our multilingual learners. That extra tutoring support has freed up the certified onsite ESOL teachers to push into more classes and focus on modeling best practices as they co-teach classes with other content area teachers. This summer, we'll provide English and math instruction to our middle and high school multilingual learners that have newly arrived, and that will give them a boost start to their 24, 25 school year. Also, we continue our, grow our own efforts in providing, to increase the number of school staff to support multilingual learners by having the year-long self-paced courses for teachers at all schools that address differentiation, scaffolding, integrating academic language instruction into content area teaching. Our next question, on improving education for students with disabilities. To support our students, we focus, we'll continue our focus on increased staffing and teacher training. We're seeking ways to increase our current staffing as we utilize various models to maximize scheduling, so we have a greater impact with staff members in the classroom. Professional development, of course, is always important to us in supporting best practices of inclusion and instructional differentiation, and our special education teams use data to design and implement the specialized instruction to our students to meet their needs. Disproportionate identification. We are committed to our goal to mitigate and eliminate disproportionate practices in the areas of identification, discipline, and placement of students with disabilities. Our school and department teams monitor and reflect on the data points, student engagement, and the needs of our newer teachers. School administration has increased their focus on students' meaningful connections to the school community and engagement in the learning process. The Department of Special Education has a strong focus on teacher training, including in the areas of social, emotional, and behavioral strategies. They have a team of four behavioral specialists that deploy to the schools to assess student needs, modeling for and coaching on instructional teams, and designing plans for most appropriate interventions for students. Effective community partnerships, our community schools are doing well, we have two identified, we work in collaboration with our community stakeholders that have a common agenda focused on meeting the needs of our students and families. So Carver Elementary, they completed their first needs assessment back in 2021, and the outcomes that were identified them, as we remember, the clothing, the food, strengthening community partnerships, and behavioral health services, and those needs continue. The Carver team continues to identify community stakeholders who can provide those resources to meet those needs. Stakeholders offer academic interventions, legal services, dental and health services, and resources to meet food and clothing needs. They provide extended learning and enrichment opportunities through their out-of-school-time program, their after-school program, as we know, and they also have parent-family engagement events to build trust and strengthen those parent-family and school relationships. And Lexington Park Elementary is in their first year as a community school this year, they are completing their needs assessment and their asset mapping, and with that information, they will then identify their staffing and program needs for the 24, 25 school year. And our last question, expanding behavioral health support, always very important for us. We continue to prioritize the goal of maintaining and expanding our mental and behavioral health supports for students. Data such as risk assessments, threat assessments, our CPS reports, our bullying and harassment handled with care, we're always looking at that data and analyzing that to determine trends in behavioral health and ways we need to move forward in supporting the students in our schools. And we also look at that social work team data, that's very important to us as well, as we decide the school placement of social workers to meet the needs of those students. Data is also used to drive professional development for our student services team members, our school psychologists, school counselors, our PPWs, and our social workers, and grants have been used to provide ongoing professional development for those folks. And lastly, we are collaborating with the identified community agencies who were recently awarded grants through the Maryland Consortium of Coordinated Supports. So we look forward to the ongoing collaboration with those two partners in providing services for our students and our families outside of the school.
Thank you very much, Cheryl.
All right, and so we're in the homestretch with pillar five, I'm going to ask Ms. McCourt to join me up here too, because governance and accountability crosses over between not only the reporting and planning and development of the plan, but also the dollars that are tied to it. So, one of the questions is about stakeholder engagement, I think we already talked about that with what we're doing with the town hall meetings. I do want to also let everybody know, and the public and yourselves, that there is an online survey on the website, as well as an email at blueprint@smcps.org that will come directly to us, so that if people have questions or input around it. You heard from all of the pillar chairs about the work that they do with their stakeholder groups and gathering the input, and that's also the case system why too. For example, as we've met with Slack throughout the year, we've talked about the blueprint, and we talked about college career readiness, and what does it mean for them? So, that engagement is critical for developing such a monumental plan and effort. So with that, Ms. McCourt.
So as Dr. Marr was engaging our stakeholder groups, I was engaging our CFOs across the state, trying to interpret the law and what it really meant to us from a financial accounting standpoint. And what it meant was, we had to completely restructure our chart of accounts. We had to make sure that we were reporting based on the demographics at the individual schools, and we've had lots of dialogue about this, but we also had to retrain our staff here on how to make sure that we were tracking our expenses and aligning them to those specific identified project numbers within our chart of accounts. We also, we engage in weekly meetings amongst all the CFOs with MSD and AIB to ensure that we are understanding how we're expected to track these funds and utilize the funds. We've also worked on uploading reports, 200,000-line monthly financial reports, and that's for a school district our size. A larger school district may have 800,000-line financial reports that are being tracked to ensure that we are appropriately reporting on both the state and the local county government funds with Res卡to Blueprint funding, based on the specific revenue sources. We're computing the school allocations based on the demographics, which means, how many EL students do I have at Great Mills High School, times the dollar amount that we're receiving from both the state and local, and then matching up the staffing and ensuring that the staffing coding is taking place in our HR system, tracking to our payroll system, and then tracking finally to our audit and then tracking finally to our audit of financial statements, as well as being reported on that monthly basis. Ensuring that those monies are being tracked at 75% at the school level and only allowing for 25% in the central office level. Um, we're working closely with, uh, Dr. Montgomery and Dr. Farrell on aligning all of the funds to the blueprint activities. Um, as an example, the ESL funds, or ensuring that, um, we have a substantial amount of, uh, costs associated with our special education well beyond the funding levels due to the tune of a billion dollars across the state for special education, in excess of the amount of funding that's coming to us. How can we align that to other areas of funds and ensuring that it is absolutely in alignment with the intent of the blueprint? Um, we've engaged with our stakeholders across the state to ensure that, um, they understand some of the nuances, Dr. Smith, that we've come across, um, on the state laws that perhaps the wording should have been tweaked ever so slightly. And certainly, we've been looking ahead at, um, focusing on our future funding trends. For example, our transitional supplemental instruction monies will be going away in a few years, but we still have those mandates within the blueprint. Our comparable wage index funding will be going away in a couple of years, but we still have the funding needs to support the $60,000 salary requirements.
So, um, as you can see, uh, there is, there are a number of pieces here. We've talked a lot about the pillars of the blueprint. They're the frame of that house. But, uh, as Ms. Lorick said to me before, there's other pieces that make this house a home, and those are the other parts of the school system that operate, the arts, the athletics, the enrichment programs. You heard so much about what, what's valuable to our students, the support elements of the system, transportation, utilities, food service, support staff, technology, infrastructure, school safety. All of those pieces, um, are part of what the system operates, and these pillars are one element within it. But there is so much more. So while we're commenting on that, there is that bigger picture that we're always have an eye to, uh, for what our students and staff need. So our plan is posted on the website at smcps.org/blueprint. There's an opportunity for feedback. Uh, we are submitting this draft to, uh, the AIB and MSD on May 1st. They will then give us feedback between May and June. Um, we likely will have a finalized plan if it follows last year's timeline by the end of July. So, um, this is, this is part of the process. It is not the end of the process. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, and I'm sure my colleagues would be happy to entertain them.
Thank you very much.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Your national, uh, board certification for your teachers.
Yes.
When they're doing the coursework, is that transferable to a master's degree?
No, the certification is not a course. It is, um, an assessment of, of, uh, four components of professional practice, uh, that they demonstrate, they reflect upon, and they submit, um, that evidence to National Board for Evaluation, and they earn that National Board certification through that, that submission process. Um, it is not tied to a graduate program.
Okay, thank you. It's all ahead.
No questions. Thank you very much.
It is a tremendous amount of work, um, and, uh, and reflection and consideration and, um, and you and your entire team have done an amazing, um, amount of work and, and put a lot of heart and soul into this to really demonstrate to MSDE and the AIB, how effective what we've been doing is, and where, uh, where we can be better, um, to add that in as well. The challenge, as we have often said, is, um, while the dollars we have follow the child, the dollars from the state don't, um, don't support the student in the way they, um, everyone originally believed they would. And that disconnect is, um, difficult for people to understand. For me, it's difficult for me to accept.
As it was presented, most people bought into and supported the blueprint because we assumed it was funding in addition to, not in the repl- in place of. So we're doing all of this, and we're flat funded from the state for next year.
And it would be nice if the state would actually catch up, given that the numbers they put out five years ago, that we were looking at and expecting for this year, were either not accurate, or they never adjusted them. And so I do hope that, um, from, from multiple angles in the coming year, that, that the appropriate stakeholders will be, um, seeking to, um, make a change to that. If, you know, if we're going to move forward, uh, with fidelity, we all need to be on the same page, and we all need to be transparent about it. We're doing our part. I look to the state to do theirs. But thank you, because, um, this is a tremendous amount of work, and I know that, um, however it turns out, our students, you will make sure our students excel, and I appreciate that.
Mary?
I want to thank you, Dr. Mara and your team, for the tremendous amount of work you have done over the years concerning the blueprint, and it is sincerely appreciated. You ha- I know you have volumes and volumes of paperwork that you have submitted, and it is appreciated. Thank you.
And I, and, and again, the, our, my colleagues who, who stepped forward, there's a tremendous amount of work with their teams that really make this happen, so, this, this is not something any, any one, or two, or five, or 10 people can do, so.
Right.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lorick. You've, you've, you've said so much tonight. I just, uh... Yes, well, yes. But thank you for all you do. This is, again, as you've all said, uh, a heck of a lift. And, and at the end of it, I, I hope we're able to see that it, that it, that it had a, that it had a deep purpose, and even more importantly, a substantial impact. When we're submitting monthly detailed, uh, financial reporting to the state, 200,000 lines, you know, like that, no one's, uh, where's that going? Who's looking at it? Who's, uh, we, you know, we could, a- at the end of every quarter, at midway through every year, at the end of every year, we could be submitting it, and, and that, that would completely transform the amount of labor that's required to account for how many paper towels are used at a particular school, so you can track it back to the cost expenses for the children who are enrolled in that school to make sure that, you know, that we're spending our money 75, 25 according to the demographics of the school. It, at the end, you just say, you, it's, there's a lot there. There's a lot there.
Well, and I would add that the impact on students needs to be a positive impact.
Right.
Because there's all kinds of impacts.
Right.
So.
It's a heavy lift.
Just saying.
We basically look like I'm on Schwarzenegger. Nice.
Pick things up and put things down.
Right, pick things up and put things down.
Thank you very much. All right, um, next item on the agenda, the FY '25 budget update. Ms. McCourt.
And what I neglected to say was, um, you have to be very strategic with our budget.
Oh, my goodness.
It is, it has been like pulling chaps, moving around all the pieces to the puzzle.
Right, and I'll, before we start and we end, is there anywhere in the blueprint that references the need for certified athletic trainers or athletic programming in any way, shape, or form? Is there any funding provided from the state in any way, shape, or form that's relative to any of the extracurricular activities, fine arts, enrichment programs, field trips? Is that anywhere in there?
Dr. Smith, why don't we just start on the last slide?
Right, I just, because I, I, I worry that we, we lost, we lost a vast audience here, and it was, they were, I mean, they were fantastic. I love to see kids come out and advocate, and they really, they, they really do take to heart, what we have to do and why we have to do it. We just had a blueprint update where the entire system is basically deeply embedded in this work to write one more 100-page update. And in that, there's no reference to safety and security. No money funded, no reference to it. There's no reference in a class size. In fact, the AIB has come out and said that class size doesn't matter. Thank you very much. You're wrong. There's no reference to the arts or athletics. And let me assure you, you will pack every single audience if you say, "I'm going to cut athletics." And yet, no one's providing the funding to be able to do it. Extracurricular programs, small schools, that's all we heard about last night, was the incredible value of a multi-generational intimate small school. And what we've heard from the state is, that's not efficient. You should be closing them. Technology, while technology is a driver of so much of what we're doing, it's not directly funded in the blueprint. Transportation, nonexistent. Utilities, don't care. Employee benefits, nothing. We're supposed to have a $60,000 starting salary, and they provided us flat funding for next year. Thanks.
What's in the blueprint then? That's my question. What's in it?
Well, you just heard. It's, it's, it's full-day pre-K, which is great.
Transitional supplemental instruction.
Transitional supplemental instruction. Community schools, wraparound services. But keep in mind that there's, I mean, what's in the blueprint? An incredible amount of work for a school system. That's what's, that's what's in the blueprint. So, the budget.
Yes, the budget. So we did, uh, let's recap where we started at in January. This is the budget that went across the street to the county commissioners. We requested $136.9 million from the county commissioners, or an increase of $9.5 million. We included $3.2 million of fund balance, um, for the school district, $512,000 for the charter school, and $143.4 million for, from the state, an increase of $102,000 under the blueprint. $2.6 million in federal funds and $2.4 million in other funds, for a total of $289.1 million, or an increase of $8.5 million. Of the nine and a half million dollar increase request from the county commissioners, we were seeking two predominant areas. Under our essential cost change forms, transportation of $815,000 to support our bus drivers, bus attendants, and contracted operations, as well as to support the negotiated agreement of $8.7 million, supporting 1,600 teachers, 836 ESPs, and 146 administrators. However, of the $9.5 million, the county commissioners supported, and we appreciate the support of $7 million over the FY '24 funding, and that amount they tentatively agreed to on March 19th, and it went to their public hearing yesterday. So, we're faced with a $2.4 million, $2.5 million shortfall in revenues as compared to expenditures. Compounded with that, we also have a deficit that we're looking at, or a, um, ending of, uh, all of our S-R-Pandemic funds as of September 30th, 2024. That impacts a decrease in our FTEs, our staff, of 69 positions. So not only do we have to figure out a $2.5 million reduction on our expenditure budget for our unrestricted funds, but we have to rehome because we don't want to lay off anyone. We have absorbed a variety of vacancies within our unrestricted funds during the course of the year so that we can shift those restricted-funded positions over into vacant positions under our unrestricted funds.
But bottom line, 69, and actually, well, there's another one, 70 positions. There'll be 70 fewer employees in St. Mary's County come July 1, 2024.
That will be felt throughout the school district. At 130 point, $134.3 million for local funds, $7 million increase, we have also gone back and reviewed our current year's budget to analyze what salary savings, other savings that we have. And we were able to adjust our use of fund balance to $4.3 million, maintaining the charter school amount of $512,000 from the prior slide. However, a slight decrease of one, to $143.4 million, so now we're looking at an increase of only $84, not the prior $102,000. And this is the number as of today. We haven't received the final numbers from the MSD. Maintain the federal funds of $2.6 million and other funds of $2.4 million, for a total amount now of $287.7 million, or a $7.1 million increase. The planned use of fund balances, um, as previously presented, $1.2 million to go to bus driver retention, $2 million towards OPEP, other post-employment benefits. A new item is $1 million towards an HVAC control system. This is something that was put forward by our maintenance department at the beginning of the budget development process. However, we did not have identified funds to be able to support this. And $150,000 to support the teachers pursuing NBC Blueprint Schools incentive, and this is supporting Carver, Spring Ridge Middle School, and Great Mills High School. So a total planned use of fund balance now of $4.3 million. The primary areas of those increases, as previously presented, are within the instructional salaries and wages, where you see a $2.9 million increase, supporting the recently, um, codified negotiated agreement. Special education, an increase of $1.4 million. Student transportation, $2 million. And of course, fixed charges, supporting the 10% fix, uh, health insurance increase of $4.8 million. Bottom line, 2.5% increase. However, to get there, we needed to make some budget changes. We went back and looked and scrutinized every single line, not only of next year's budget, but the current year's budget. Where are our actual costs coming in as compared to where we originally budgeted them in the current fiscal year? So we updated our budget projections, recognizing known attrition in retirements. Year-to-date, in this fiscal year, we've already recognized 40 retirements. We already have announced another 40 retirements as of June, or July. Uh, we talked earlier today about the dual enrollment MOU being updated with CSM and recognizing a $100,000 reduction in our cost next year, back to our FY '23 level of spend. PSAT SAT AP participation via articulated intent, in excess of another $100,000 decrease that we can recognize in next year's budget. We analyzed our utilities, and we're able to reuse those costs. And we reallocated FTEs to support blueprint programming, particularly reallocating some FTEs for ESOL, reallocating FTEs to freshman academy as a result of the closing of the Fairlead, and reallocating FTEs for our IEP facilitators. Dr. Mara already discussed the, um, three, the five pillars and realigning all of our FTEs and our programs to ensure that they are in conformance with the blueprint intent. And of course, we've already discussed the rest of the slides. Are there any questions?
I have no questions, but I do just have to say that, um, I mean, the entire central office has been so resourceful and really pinching these pennies. And, and despite all that, we still have to endure some sad losses, but thank you for, for being so resilient despite this craziness that doesn't even include 99% of what makes a school a school. So, thank you.
No questions, but thank you for your work.
When will we know what the final word is from the commissioners?
Uh, the end of May. However, we should have a pretty good indication next week.
They'll get together. They have a meeting next week. The week after that is a designated county commissioner budget work session, correct? I think that following Tuesday.
I believe so.
But I think the next, not the next one, but the, the next two after that.
Yeah, 7th and 14th. And then, and then they provide, they have to provide final direction back to us. This is the total, total, that we can go back and then redo the entire budget to make sure that everything is balanced, because we cannot have an unbalanced budget, and you cannot use fund balance for recurring costs. And so this is one of the reasons why you cannot add FTEs on one side while you're cutting on another side. When we talk about contracted services, this is a, this is a year-to-year cost. So in the event that the budget went bust, we would simply stop that contract or go back and renegotiate that contract, or consider or compress or collapse. If you hire a person, you are then responsible for that person for the length of their career within the school system. And that's why everybody wants to be a St. Mary's County Public School employee. We are bending our, we're bending over... We are bending our, we're bending over backwards, we're coming up a million ways, because we get to the end of the, with the end of these, these grant funds through ESAR, and we desperately don't want anybody to leave our employment. We want to find them a new seat on the bus. We're doing everything that we possibly can, because there is nothing more important than standing by the people who do the work on behalf of children. So, you know, this is, this is, this is really where we are, and, and we hear, we hear all of the, the needs that people have, and they are absolute needs, but there's only so many resources available. So I appreciate, I appreciate your patience with all of this. I can't tell you the work that staff is doing. Now Dale is, Dr. Farrell isn't here this evening, but it is, it is, it is amazing work trying to find new homes for people, because everybody wants to keep doing exactly what they're doing, and when you have to say, well, maybe next year you're still with us, but you might not be in the same room, or in the same seat, or in the same role. So I just thank you for all the work that's going on, and, and it's going on in every single county in the state of Maryland, and it's all going on in every single county in the state of Maryland because of the blueprint. Before the blueprint, you didn't see people being laid off, and you didn't see the challenges that you have now. You didn't see the edicts, and the direction, and the erosion of local autonomy that we have right now. I know that if you want to solve a problem, you solve it in St. Mary's. If you look to outside of St. Mary's to solve a problem, you're going to be woefully disappointed. So I thank all the problem solvers.
The specific dates are May fourteenth, that is, the, that the county commissioners will provide direction on their operating budget, and then May twenty-first, they are slated to approve their final budget. May twenty-second, you are scheduled to adopt your final budget.
Thank you very much.
Tight, 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 tight.
I, I, I think I've said everything I need to say.
Mary?
Thank you.
All right, with that, the next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, May eighth, with executive session beginning at eight AM and the open meeting beginning at nine AM. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.